And required to by law to begin the redistricting hearing tonight at exactly 6:30. So, thank you everyone for being concise and thank you all our speakers for sacrificing one minute of their time to make that a reality. So, sir, I'll turn it over for you, to you, and then it will...
Agenda item G, public hearings. Agenda item G1, public hearing to be heard at 6:30 to receive a report from staff on the redistricting process and permissible criteria to be considered to review maps recommended by the redistricting advisory committee and submitted map, submitted draft maps from the public for selection.
Thank you.
Good evening again, council. Good to see you and members of the community here for the first time. Councils, essentially you've seen this presentation already. There will be just a couple of minor things we did, as I mentioned during the last time we met, that we had a map submitted from the community after the deadline, so could not be considered for that third public hearing, but it is in your packet tonight and I'll point it out as well. So, as you know, and for those watching for the first time, we started this process back in June. By law, we must have what we call two pre-draft map hearings and then four post, excuse me, two post-draft map or draft map hearings. This is what would be considered the fourth. However, city council decided to name a redistricting advisory committee and that committee facilitated some public hearings itself. It also facilitated some public workshops on the, on the process and the mapping tools, et cetera. So, here we are, the final public hearing with the intention of council to select a map for the next 10 years. The maps use data from the 2020 census. Now, the 2020 census was delayed in its release and was released August 12th, but California takes those census data and adjusts it with its prisoner population. And so, every jurisdiction, counties, cities, school districts, any special districts, cemetery districts, health districts, et cetera, had to wait until those data were released and those data were released in late September. Then, one could start drafting maps for consideration. Cities, most cities in the state of California have until April 17th to complete this process and this city is on schedule. When we're looking at redistricting maps, we must follow some federal laws and California's Fair Maps Act laws. The federal laws are non-negotiable. We're trying to create city council districts that are of equal population, the six districts of equal population.
During the presentation, everybody, please keep it down. It makes it hard for other people to hear.
It's kind of important. This happens every 10 years. It's an important decision that council will make tonight and, and also, we want to honor all those who participated in the community in both the workshops and also submitting draft maps. So, in doing that, the council, excuse me, the, the folks who were drafting maps tried to create six council districts of equal population. Really difficult to do, especially when you're, not only you're trying to create equal population across the entire city with the six council districts, but they have to use census blocks to draw the lines. And so, it's not just a matter of, well, I like how this might look if I just make a line like this and that'll be a district or this could be a district, et cetera. We have to use census blocks. And in some cases, census blocks are like snowflakes. They're, they're not any too alike. You'll see rectangles and squares, but they'll have more people inside those rectangles and squares. But if you're looking sort of like the west side of town or up north where there's a lot of geographical area for its census block, but it doesn't have as many folks perhaps residing within the census block. So, that's number one. We must follow the Federal Voting Rights Act and we want to have no racial gerrymandering. Once we do that, then we shift into California and we go in this particular priority that the districts must be geographically contiguous, that to the extent practical, we don't want to divide neighborhoods or communities of interest. And we want to have easily identifiable boundaries. And in the Central Valley, that's kind of easy with railroad tracks and canals, waterways, freeways, et cetera. And we want to have our districts be compact and we know that we shall not favor or discriminate against a political party when we're going through this process. So, if we're looking at the map that was adopted in 2015, when the, when the city went to districts or by district elections, it, it had to use the 2010 census. Even though it adopted a map in 2015, it had to use the 2010 census. And the ideal population per district was 13,141. But if you look at this table on the screen, I want to draw your attention to the third cell down on the right-hand side that says 8.53%. When I talked about equal population, you can have a 10% deviation across the six districts. And in this case, the, the map that was adopted in 2015 has an 8.536%. You're going to see on these slides, a deviation number for every map for council to consider. And how we get that number is, we take the highest percentage, and in this particular example, it would be in District 5, which says 4.26%. That means it's overpopulated from the ideal by 4.26%. And then, we take the highest negative number, which is in District 4, which is negative 4.27%, and you add those two together and that's how you get your deviation number. We want to keep that under 10 when we're looking at, at map options. So, based on the 2020 census, the ideal population per district was 14,447. So, we asked through the outreach and the city staff did a great job, along with the advisory committee, in trying to gather information on what is your neighborhood and what is your communities of interest and what defines your community. And we received a lot of data, both in testimonies and emails, website forms, et cetera. And the, this is just a snapshot of what was generated. There were a lot of repeats, so the submissions were edited for clarity and brevity. So, council has before them some maps that it cannot consider because they were not population balanced, meaning they were over that 10% deviation, or they were not contiguous. They didn't stay connected throughout their entire attempt in creating a district. So, we have these draft maps for council. The draft map on the very bottom on the right, map 401, is the map that council did not see last time. It was submitted, I believe, the day before or the day of the last public hearing, but it was just too late for that particular public hearing to be considered. Council, again, has seen all these maps. These are available on the city's redistricting website. You can see the deviation number in, in these map examples. Talks about some other pieces as well. And we want to really thank all the community members who submitted maps regardless if they're viable or, you know, for consideration for council tonight or not. And the advisory committee was charged with coming up with a recommendation for city council to consider. City council does not have to take the advisory commit, committee's recommendation. It could make its own choice. And that concludes my presentation. I hand it back over to the mayor and let me be the first one to say congratulations on your decision, whatever it is tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions at this time before we open the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Fernando.
Is there any reason besides District 2 having a, a commercial area that my whole map is not being visible? You're not showing the entirety of District 2.
Oh, you're talking about on these examples?
In all the examples.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And maybe, I understand that we have a commercial area in my district, but my constituents and my voters need to know where they stand. For example, if somebody has a complaint at a certain business that's in my district, how are they going to know when you're not putting it on the map?
You referring to the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, if...
No, I'm, I'm referring to, I'm referring to the industrial area of District, District 2. You're not showing this complete map and this is a disservice to my voters.
I appreciate your thoughts on that and if we were to show the entire city, the representation of the city districts would be very small. The same applies for up north. You can see north is cut off as well.
One vote makes a difference, sir.
Understand that, sir. As a candidate for two elections, I completely understand that and I respect that. The alternative, however, is on the city's website, there's an interactive review tool that folks could look at all the maps that are submitted, compare them one by one. They can drill down almost to the house, like a Google Maps.
Yeah, but you're missing my point. The point being is that every map that I'm looking at is cutting off District 2. You're not showing the complete map of District 2.
What would you like, sir?
I would like to see my map complete, my district complete, not cut off.
Okay. I answered, I answered why it is that way, so I respect your point.
What was the answer?
I said if we showed the entire, the entire city and all its districts, the, the representation for the city and the districts would be really small on these particular handouts.
Does that make any sense, Mayor?
If I may, if I may, could I please? I think if you look at the entire city, Fernando, you know, you'd even include some, some city islands that are out on, way out on East Highway 140 and obviously the industrial area. I think what he, what he's saying is that the size of the map and capturing that would be difficult is kind of what I'm saying. You're referring to the industrial area in 2, I'm assuming?
Yes, because...
Yeah. And there's probably no, I would imagine probably no residents there, I'd assume, so...
Well, Mayor Pro Tim Blake, you know, that, that's a, that's a good answer, but the point being is that my voters don't know. For example, we had a former business owner that had his, his, his soccer complex in the, the commercial area, the industrial zone. I just want to, I just want to clarify why we're not showing the entirety of my District 2.
Just if I could enter for a second. Correct me if I'm wrong, Fernando, but it seems to me, I mean, looking at the map over there, too, we have a council district map over there, everybody can see, but it just seems like we're missing the area around the wastewater treatment. Is there any other, is there any other area aside from, because you got the, of the road strip that goes down to the wastewater treatment plan area? Is there anything aside from that? Just, just looking at the map?
I, I'd just like to see it all together, that's all. I, I just, I, you know, people are not, my constituents, my voters are not seeing how big District 2 really is. And District 2 encompasses almost an area the size of our, of our residential district. And for the people that have businesses there, rigs, ambulance, former business owners, Malibu boats, they might want to know which district they are in.
Okay. All right, noted. And for anybody you, you can refer during the meeting to the, the big map over there and if anybody in the audience as well can look at the, the bigger map as well, in the area down by the wastewater treatment plan. For the record, the area around the wastewater treatment plan is not pictured on, on these maps. Anybody, any other questions? Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your work. Now opening the public hearing. Jennifer, you said there were 24 voicemails?
Yes, so we do have 24 voicemails. We do have one that's in MONG that will need to be translated and we have, I believe, four that are in Spanish that would also need translation. If I may, Mayor, I'm sorry, our Spanish translator is here, so if I could have him come up and let people know that he's here to translate for him.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Alberto Rios. Voy a ser el intérprete para la lengua de español para los que ocupen. Gracias.
And Mayor, we also have, as of right now, 15 requests to speak forums.
Okay. What if we start with the, the MONG voicemail and then the Spanish ones and then we'll open it up to the rest and then we'll continue with the speakers at that point?
Okay.
Sound good?
This matter many are MONG for idea in 2. We would like you to chose map 106. Many are all MONG, have language issues. I have a language issue and another one can help me. If they have a language issue, I know, I know I can help them. I don't like you to cutting the street out Lombo. This street, we had all MONG living at each side of the street. We don't want you to cutting like this. We cannot helping all people. If someone know, know, if someone don't know, they can help, they can, they can help each other. I would like you to chose map 106. Thank you.
Sir, I apologize. You mentioned a street name? I, I didn't quite catch it.
Lombo. I, I don't know what she's talking about Lombo.
Yeah. Yeah. She meant...
Lozabo?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe Lozabo.
Lozabo's in the county out in Beechwood, but Lozabo obviously is in the city.
Yeah, she's talking about Lombo, so I don't know what the street, maybe like that, so I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, most likely, Lozabo. Four Spanish voicemails.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Telvia Robles. Estoy hablando para dejar el mensaje. Soy de Merced. Tengo más de cinco años viviendo en el Distrito 5 de Merced, pero llegué al fondado de Merced en 1986 junto con mi familia. Actualmente vivo en el vecindario de Lampo. Vivo en apartamentos de bajos ingresos donde la mayoría somos diversos, entre latinos y afroamericanos. Aunque tenemos diferentes idiomas, nuestros valores son los mismos. Tenemos muchas personas de, de edad avanzada que requieren que las tiendas y servicios de nuestro alrededor. Muchas personas que viven en mi comunidad tenemos falta de trabajo y por eso son de bajos ingresos. En nuestro distrito hay mucho comercio. Tenemos tienda de comida, ropa y hasta. El mall de Merced queda a una cuadra. Es importante que mi comunidad se mantenga unida ya que vivo en una zona donde hay tiendas y las cosas más básicas que necesito, pero también vivimos con mucha inseguridad. Tenemos muchos problemas de robo, de casa y autos. Hay mucha pandilla que causa problemas de consumo, de droga e inseguridad y la respuesta policial es muy lenta. Me gusta la forma en que el Distrito 5 está representado en el mapa 106 porque les dará a nuestra familia, vecinos, la oportunidad más justa de elegir representantes que se preocupen por nuestros problemas. Por estas razones estoy muy interesada en dar mi testimonio para apoyar el mapa 106. Merced adelante junto con C N C porque incluye y une a mi comunidad y mantiene a otras comunidades de interés de las que mi familia y amigos también forman parte.
My name is Sylvia Robles. I'm calling to leave a message. I am from Merced. I have lived in the 5th District of Merced for more than five years, but I came to Merced in 1986 with my family. I currently live in Lampo neighborhood. I live in low-income apartments with a majority are Latino and African-American. Although we have different languages, our values are the same. We have many elderly people who require the shops and services around. Many people who live in my community are unemployed and therefore have low incomes. In our district, there is a lot of commerce. We have the food, we have food and clothing stores and even the Merced Mall is a few blocks away. It is important that my community stays together since I, since I live in an area where there are stores and there are very basic things that I need, but we also live with a lot of insecurity. We have many problems with home and car theft. There are many gangs that cause problems of drug, of drug use and insecurity. The police response is very limited and the police response is very limited. I like the way District 5 is represented on the 106 map because it will give our family and neighbors the fairest chance of representatives who care about our issues. For these reasons, I am very interested in giving my testimony to support map 106. Merced forward together with C N C because it includes my community and keeps other communities of interest together.
Mi nombre es Alondra Adila y estoy realizando esta llamada para dar mi comentario en la redistribución de distritos. Yo vivo en un nuevo desarrollo de casas en el área entre Bear Creek Lane, Parcera Road y G Street en el Distrito 6 de la ciudad de Merced. El Distrito 6 es muy diverso, este, hay latinos, blancos, asiáticos, afroamericanos. Cerca de nosotros tenemos la escuela preparatoria El Capitán, la escuela secundaria Crucial, el colegio de Merced, el hospital Mercy, un centro comercial, una iglesia católica, parques. También tenemos fácil acceso a clínicas y tiendas de alimentos. Mi interés hará mi testimonio porque sé que el Distrito 6 es uno de los distritos que más prestarán los próximos diez años. Una importante comunidad de interés que debemos mantener íntegra es la comunidad de Merced College y sus alrededores, ya que es el hogar de muchos estudiantes, profesores y miembros del personal. Es muy importante que esta comunidad permanezca conectada con el creciente centro comercial y viviendas en la calle Y y Yosemite Avenue en el Distrito 6. El límite más al sur del Distrito 6 debe seguir Yosemite Avenue con el nuevo límite entre los Distritos 4 y 6, Yosemite Avenue, Paulson Road y el Portal Drive. Por favor, mantengo unida a la comunidad de Merced College. Es importante crear distritos que sigan la ley 3 map para crear mapas justos y mantener íntegras a las comunidades de interés. Apoyo el mapa 106 porque mi comunidad está incluida, al igual que las docenas de familias que participaron con C N C para crear este mapa comunitario. Gracias y por favor apoyen el mapa 106. Gracias.
Hello, good morning. My name is Alondra Aguilar and I am making this call to give my comment on redistricting. I live in a new development of houses in the area between Baker Lane, Cardella Road and G Street in District 7 of the city of Merced. District 6 is very diverse. There are Latinos, whites, Asians and African-Americans. Close to us, we have El Capitan High School, Crucial High School, Merced College, Mercy Hospital, a shopping center, a Catholic church and parks. We also have easy access to clinics and grocery stores. I am interested in giving my testimony because I know that District 6 is one of the districts that will grow the most in the next 10 years. An important community of interest that we need, that we will need to keep intact is the community of Merced College and the surrounding area as it is home to many students, faculty and staff members. It is very important that this community remain connected to the growing shopping center and housing on G Street and Yosemite Avenue in District 6. The southernmost boundary of District 6 should follow Yosemite Avenue with a new boundary between Districts 4 and 6, Yosemite Avenue, Paulson Road and the Portal Drive. Please keep the Merced community together. It's important to follow the districts that follow the law. On my end, the voicemail cut off, but the person, Alondra, goes on to say that she supports map 106.
Thank you, sir. Next voicemail.
Hola, mi nombre es Ceciles Escobedo y estoy aquí para dar mi comentario sobre la redistribución de distritos. Soy un residente del Distrito 3 y es importante que mi comunidad permanezca unida y poder elegir un candidato que nos represente. Es importante crear distritos que sigan la ley 3 map para crear mapas equitativos y mantener íntegras a las comunidades de interés. Aunque vivo en el Distrito 3, creo que los Distritos 1 y 2 son muy similares en mi vecindario. Los Distritos 1 y 2 son diversos con las, con familias afroamericanas, latinas y blancas. Estos distritos deben permanecer completos porque nuestros distritos comparten las mismas experiencias como vecindarios interminables, problemas de vivienda y diferentes idiomas. Los Distritos 1 y 2 conforman todo el sur de Merced con el límite más al norte del Distrito y definidos por West Bear Street y el límite más al norte del Distrito 1 definido por Baker Drive. Es importante crear distritos que sigan la ley 3 map para crear mapas justos y mantener íntegras a las comunidades de interés. Me importa porque esto le da a cada distrito una voz justa sobre cómo estamos representados. El mapa crea oportunidades para mejorar las necesidades de las familias como la mía. Como madre, me preocupa realmente la seguridad de mis hijos y las escuelas a las que tendrán que ir. El mapa actual ha representado diversos problemas para nuestros estudiantes, ya que han tenido que ir a escuelas muy retiradas pudiendo ir a escuelas en mi distrito. Es por eso que apoyo el mapa Merced Forward to Get a Map. Por favor, apoyemos el mapa 106. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Celeste Escobedo and so I am here to comment on the redistricting. I am, I am a District 3 resident and it is important for my community to remain united and to be able to elect a candidate to represent us. It is important that the law is followed. It was, sorry, it was also broken on my end. Map to create map and keep communities intrigued. Even though I live in District 3, I think Districts 1 and 2 are very similar. Districts 1 and 2 are diverse with African-American, Latino and white families. Those districts must remain whole because our districts share, share the same experiences and neighborhoods, housing issues and different languages. District 1 and 2 make up all of southern Merced with the northernmost boundary of the district defined by West Bear Creek and Baker Drive. The, this voicemail was also cut off on my end, but the speaker goes on to represent map 106.
I'm Berta and I live in the Distrito 2 of Merced, cerca de la Iglesia Sagrado Corazón. He's been organizer for several years and I support the map 106 Merced adelante juntos. My sobrina is part of 99 Route y me ha mantenido informada sobre el proceso de redistribución de distritos. I support the map 106 porque la comunidad de campesinos y gente de bajo recursos necesita ser escuchada. El concilio debe de escuchar de la, de la comunidad más necesitada, no solamente de los que son dueños de negocios y se interesan por sus ganancias.
Hi, my name is Berta and I live in Merced near Sacred Heart Church. I have been an organizer for several years and support the map 106. Merced forward together. My niece is part of 99 Route and she has kept me informed about the redistricting process. I support the map 106 because the community needs to be heard. The council must listen to the most needed community, not just those, not just the minds of those who own it.
Thank you. Is that it for the voicemails in Spanish, Jennifer?
Yes. Want us to continue on with them?
Please, if you, now the ones, there should be about, probably close to 20 remaining in English?
I believe so, yes.
All right, if you could play those starting at this time.
Excuse me, I am leaving a public comment for the city redistricting, redistricting hearing. Good afternoon. My name is Yahira Karas and I live in District 5 of the city of Merced for two years now. My community is surrounding Rivera Middle School on the streets of Sunwest Hill and Our Street, among other shopping malls. Among other shopping causes, we are a diverse community of Latino, African American and white families and students as well. It is important that my community stays together so we have a better opportunity to elect a candidate of choice that will care and address our needs. My community for years has suffered from high crime and we often hear about our cars being broken into. We also lack proper lighting and roads. I want to see my community thrive and my neighborhoods to be finished. I like the way District Five is represented in map one oh six because it gives us, because it gives our families and neighbors a better chance at electing representatives who will care about our issue. I am also a student at Merced Community College and I think it is important to keep the Merced College and surrounding areas, surrounding areas in whole, which is home to many students, faculty and staff members. It is also very important that this community remains connected to the growing housing and shopping centers on G Street and Yosemite Avenue in District Six. So that way, people who are a part of Merced Community College can have an input and vote on the important decisions that affect our school, our community and our lives. The southernmost boundary of District Six, District Six should follow Yosemite Avenue with the new boundaries between District Four and Six, which include East Yosemite Avenue, Paulson Road and El Portal Drive. This keeps the Merced College community in whole. I support map one oh six, the Merced Forward Together program because it prioritizes keeping communities of interest in whole and would ensure a smaller percentage of population deviation. This map is also, this map also takes into account current and future growth of the city in D Six. By choosing map one oh six, it will allow to elect representatives that can address our issues that we care about over the next ten years. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Camara Rasta and I'm leaving my public comment for the redistricting for the red, for the red district. And like I said, my name is Camara Rasta and I live in District One of Merced. My neighborhood is between A Street and M Street in South Merced. I consider both districts wanting to be part of my community. Districts wanting to are incredibly diverse, collision direct. Districts that must remain connected and kept whole because our districts both share the same lived experiences, unfinished neighborhoods, housing burdens and extended isolation. Districts wanting to will make the same kind of a Merced. For Districts Two, northernmost boundary defined by W, thirteen Street and District One's northernmost boundary defined by Baker Drive. Keep my community whole like this optimism is our vote to ensure we can advocate for our priorities for the next decade and elect a candidate that truly represents us. I support map one oh six because it creates opportunities to uplift needs and keep together our communities. I like to see my neighborhood finished such as fixed sides, sidewalks, clean and safe parks and youth programs, affordable housing and more. I support map one oh six because it creates two districts of the Latino, C, V, A, P, over fifty percent priorities, keeping communities of interest whole and would ensure a smaller percentage of population. Map one oh six is the best option that divides the population in each district equally because it's ensuring my district that someone has the same values and aspirations to respond to take my community into consideration. I am a mother and my future mother and I would want to better my baby and other children in my district and can have a, have access to state and clean parks and equal schools. It was unfortunate to see in the news this morning about terrible accident near our Sacred Heart Church. This is not the first time in this big call to change our neighborhood by adding basic needs such as, for example, better street lighting or stop signs that will prevent which I get from happening. At using one oh six, it will allow us over the next ten years to choose rep, to address the issues that we care about.
I leave in a message for the redistricting hearing. My name is Michelle Vega and I'm a resident at District Four of Merced. I live in a format complex on Park Avenue and the extended, by street, you see a apartment all the way from G Street to the, to Park Avenue. This family is our mixed, that is Latinos, African Americans and whites. Merced High School is a block away. I often walk to school every day alongside my sister. After school, I enjoy taking my youngest to City to the Echo Gate Park. But I am concerned about safety issues in the area such as lack of lighting, lack of affordable housing and huge problems with street drugs because my family and community is affected by this issue. I often have to wait for an adult or no adult to walk to Bear Creek fast to get to the park because there's no lighting on Bear Creek. An important community of interest we need to keep whole is the Merced College community and the surrounding areas, which is some, which is home to many students, faculty and staff members. It is very important that the community remains connected to the growing housing and shopping center on G Street and Yosemite Avenue, District Six. So that way, the people who are a part of Merced College community can have an input and vote on the important decisions that affect school, our community and our lives. The southernmost boundary of District Six should follow Yosemite Avenue and the new boundaries between District Four and Six following E. Yosemite Avenue, Paulson Road and the Portal Drive. This keeps the Merced College community whole. I support map one oh six, the Forward Together map was created with input and support from dozens of Merced community members representing all six districts, sharing their families and communities to me and keep my community and interest whole. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erica Reyes and I live in the District One between Yosemite Parkway and Parsons Avenue in South Merced. I consider both Districts One and Two part of my community. Districts wanting to are incredibly diverse coalition districts, which consists of African American, Latino and white families. These districts must remain connected and kept whole because of our districts both share the same lived experiences like unfinished neighborhoods, housing burdens and linguistic isolation. Unfortunately, in our district, we do not have access to state and clean parks and other important resources. District One and Two make up an entire, entirely of South Merced with District Two northernmost boundary defined by West thirteen Street and District One northernmost boundary defined by Baker Drive, Golden Valley High School, Sancho San Miguel Market and other fast food places such as McDonald's, Starbucks, Subway and more also one part of our community. It is important to create districts that follow the Fair Map Act to create equitable map and keep communities of interest whole. Keeping our communities whole like these opportunities are votes to ensure we can advise for our priorities for the next decade and can, can elect a candidate that truly represents us. I support map one oh six because it creates opportunities for our families. The Merced Forward, the Merced Forward Together map was created with input and support from dozens of Merced community members representing all six districts. As a mother of two teenagers who are studying in high school right now, I am concerned about future and available job opportunities in Merced for children in the next ten years. This map takes into account the current and future growth per city in District Six and helps us to solve some of these issues while keeping my community whole. Please support map one oh six. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fallow. I'm a youth here in Merced. I am calling about agenda item J one on redistricting. I want to encourage the city council to adopt map one oh six. This map is equitable and reflects the input of us youth and we know that this council values the voices of our youth. Please support map one oh six.
Hi, my name is Noel Anderson. I work at UC Merced and I wanted to comment on item D one, the redistricting. I want to voice support for map one oh six, the Merced Forward Together map. It's a really exciting map. It's a map that has taken community input from all of the districts into consideration and then thoughtfully drawn out by a demographer. It keeps communities of interest together and it really well distributes districts and resources and prioritizes people who make up the bulk of our community, working people and young people and students. So please, the city council, support map one oh six. It's a very reasonable and exciting choice for us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brett Baker and I live in Merced. And please, I'm asking you to support redistricting map two oh three. It is for our people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Plendenin. I live in Merced at one three seven seven Awani Court. I am in favor of the redistricting map number two zero three. I think this is the best map that you have presented to you. It was done by the citizens of Merced under their own volunteer time to come up with this map and I highly support it. Let's hear from the members of our community and not outsiders. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Good morning. I live in Merced, John Larson, and I'd like to have my support for redistricting map, map number two zero three. That was drawn up. I understand that council members that didn't attend any of the redistricting map meetings are frustrated with it. They didn't do their jobs or due diligence. I support map number two zero three.
Hi, this is Bill Spriggs referencing redistricting map two oh three, which I support wholeheartedly. We had a balanced committee of citizens that worked long and hard on this project. They were representative of each of the council members and the mayor and I think it was a fair process and map two oh three makes the most sense. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dear Mayor, city council members, city manager and city attorney. The behavior of several members of our city council during the discussion of item J one, redistricting during this council's meeting on February seventh, twenty twenty two, was without tact and downright disgusting. Commentary by members of the council ranged from uniformed and complete pulses regarding the ethnic makeup of the redistricting advisory committee to public affront to the committee persons themselves by stating that the council settled for the members of the committee during this election process. Also, council member Ornellus complained about how difficult it is to get participation from the public. Is it really a surprise that people are hesitant to volunteer for special committees when they get blasted by the very people that appointed them? Why would I want to subject myself to this level of disrespect and lack of appreciation? This is what other members of the community have to be asking themselves when wondering how they can help Merced be its best self. Several of you owe an apology to the redistricting advisory committee and to the citizens of Merced who made their voices overwhelmingly hurt during the redistricting public comments. Lastly, tell your lobbyist friends, pick their agenda and go back to wherever they call home. Merced can't be bought. Sincerely, Andrew Alkima, board member of Merced Boosters and huge supporter of Merced. Also, I support map two oh three.
I do live in Merced and I support map two oh three wholeheartedly. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Bye bye.
My name is Peg Larson from Merced and I just wanted to state that I think the process that the redistricting advisory committee went through to get to the point that they did should be respected, period. We have some city council members and audience members who are miserable all the time. They literally want to snap their fingers, which they do regularly, and stomp their feet to get their way. And because they're not happy with the end result, they feel they could continue name calling and bullying people while wasting everybody else's time and energy. They could, they really think they could wear us down. The council members selected the committee, not settled for them. Clearly, they would have raised another, another fuss if they didn't get the people they wanted on the committee. The council seems to have forgotten that they should not be, this should not be about their personal agenda. Jesse Arnalas should understand that his job is to take all the information presented to him and make a good decision for the city of Merced. All the council members should do what's best for Merced. This is not their personal agenda or for the few in the audience that stroke their egos. Thank you.
Hello, this is Emily Leeper calling on behalf of RT Mayor Construction in Merced. We just wanted to call in support of redistricting map two zero three. Thank you. Bye.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Framo Rodriguez and I'm here in support of map one oh six, the Merced Forward Together map. It is important that, that people of all groups, especially the Latino community, the working class community, get a fair share of representation in the district. And map one oh six will create three districts of a Latino population of over fifty percent. It prioritizing keeping communities of interest whole and will ensure a smaller percentage of population deviation. This map also takes into account, into account of current and future growth of the city in District Six. This is an opportunity to create districts that center the needs of residents such as housing needs, completing neighborhoods and improving infrastructure and building deep roots in the city of Merced. Also, it gives a fair representation in the city government that will ensure future generations of, of fair and equitable representation for the city. So please support map one oh six. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Elise Gitten and I'm a resident here in Merced and I'm calling concerning the redistricting process. I just would like to share that the Merced Forward Together map, map one oh six, was created in partnership with Merced community members who reside in all six districts. It will keep student housing in District Five together and take into account current and future growth in the city in District Six. The said city council must listen to the needs of young people, students and working families who want to grow deep roots in Merced and deserve their representation. Please consider helping us ensure the final redistricting process is equitable and community-driven by the city. My comment to you and so I'm doing so. And I also would like to share some words from my mentor, Nitron De Shona, who said, "If the minds of living beings are impure, their land is also impure. But if their minds are pure, so is their land." There are not two lands, pure or impure in themselves. The difference lies solely in the good or evil of our minds. I would like us to consider the fact that we're in troubled times. As a service veteran, I implore all of my leaders to take in consideration our citizens and make decisions that help us all stay mentally and physically healthy. Have a great day. Thank you so much for listening. Say goodbye.
Yeah, hello. I'm a resident of Merced in District Five calling about the redistricting. I gotta say, demographic and political gerrymandering has been outlawed for years, yet here we are watching an attempted bypass political process by a lobbyist group who have to justify their existence by getting an agenda passed. Their agenda does not represent the majority of your citizens. These are groups who like to fool children into leaving voicemails that they don't even understand. Aligning with them does not leave you in good company nor does it represent the majority of the voters and residents of Merced. Please listen to your residents and voters who participated in the process through your advisory committee. You have the two maps in front of you that were recommended overwhelmingly by the people of Merced who followed the rules and then it was refined by a very capable advisory committee. Please select from the maps that have been presented.
Hi, my name is Ariana Marmalejo and I'm calling to comment on redistricting for the March seventh meeting at six thirty. I'm calling in support of map one oh six, the Merced Forward Together map. This map is the best option because it's been worked on extensively by Merced residents in every district and follows all state and federal guidelines. One of the most important guidelines to follow in redistricting is the Voting Rights Act or the BRA. The BRA stands for the idea that every voter should have a chance to cast a meaningful ballot and to achieve this goal, section two of the BRA prohibits voting practices or procedures that discriminate on the basis of race, ethnicity or language. Line drawers must create district maps with one or more majority minority districts. The minority group is large enough to constitute the majority of the voting population in a district. If the group is politically cohesive and the majority group votes as a block, it usually defeats the minority group's preferred candidate. And if the minority group has less, it's an opportunity to participate in the electoral process and elect candidates of their choice than the majority group. The measurement that's used to determine whether a racial, ethnic or language minority can be the majority of a voting district is the citizen's voting age population or the CDA, meaning the population of the district's residents who are United States citizens at eighteen or older. This is because section two of the BRA specifically seeks to prevent discrimination against voters while the Constitution seeks to ensure equal representation of all persons with integers. while the Constitution seeks to ensure equal representation of all persons with indigenous history. The city of Merced must redistrict in a manner that ensures the voting power of its minority groups is consolidated and protected in VRA-compliant districts. It's against the rules to pick maps that dilute the votes of certain groups, and such maps are deemed noncompliant and not eligible to be considered as a viable option in the redistricting process. The Merced Forward Together map creates three districts with a Latino CVA of over 50%, as mandated by the VRA, and prioritizes keeping all communities of interest whole as outlined by the Fair Maps Act, and it ensures a smaller percentage of population deviation than the other map options. We deserve equal representation no matter our color, background, or zip code, and most of us in Merced believe that voters should pick our leaders, not our leaders picking their voters. Please support map 106 or use it as a guide for creating a compliant and fair map. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Christian, and I live in Merced. I think map 106 is the better map because I see my community more accurately represented. I see the boundaries of my district seem pretty distinct, and I feel like what I consider my neighborhood is kept within the same district. It also seems like it will keep our Latino communities together to make sure that their interests are properly represented, and I especially appreciate that map 106 takes into account the future growth of District 6. So I think this map works for our communities in the present as well as, say, five or 10 years in the future, so we need to make sure that we get it right. Once again, I'm in favor of map 106. Thank you so much for your time.
Those are all the voicemails, Mayor.
Thank you, Jennifer. 15, you said, requests to speak for?
I'm up to 17 now.
That was good. No, people were good. People were concise. Okay, so three minutes each. We have 17 speakers. Three minutes. Again, you know, we recognize that, you know, not just here but everywhere, this is often a contentious, difficult process, redistricting, so we respect that, you know, we honor that process. Again, we ask that everybody treats each other with respect. We do that up here, and we strive to do that up here. I think we can disagree, and we do every council meeting, but still treat each other -- and we argue passionately about things, but we still treat people with respect. And some of those voicemails, I think, and a lot of times, kind of cross the line a little bit, and we're a little disrespectful towards one side or the other, but we just ask that everybody treat each other with respect, argue passionately for your side, and we're just here to pick the best map. Again, our rules, like always, as in our code of conduct, abusive language, any profanity is to be ruled out of order. Again, be concise, get to the point as fast as possible. We've got your three minutes to talk. Must submit your request to speak form. Seventeen of you have done so, and we're ready to get going. So you want to call the first five, Jennifer, and we'll go from there.
Okay, can I get the first five speakers to come to the podium to my left? Rick Windling, Beverly Schick, Susan Walsh, Robert Scobal, and Diana Odom-Gunn.
Good evening, Mr. Windling. You have three minutes.
Yeah, oh, 30 seconds. Councilman Shelton, I think, after looking at everything, I think 106 sounds good for District 6. Thank you. And council, giving us the demographic information is terrifically wonderful. Thank you very much for having staff do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Ann Schick, and I am in support of map 203. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Bob Scobal, and I really want to speak to map 106 in terms of the effect it has on my particular street. You know, I put my own map together, and I appreciate the complexity of trying to do this and getting it as clean as possible, and I really do. I did want to also say I appreciate the hard work that the committee did to put all of this together. I think it was very well done. But what happens -- what happened at the February 7 meeting, 106 became evident. Two maps were put forward by the committee, 203, 107, but the amount of dialogue that 106 generated caused me to go back specifically and take a look at what was interesting and of value about 106. And then what I discovered was where my home is at, where I reside, is right alongside Bear Creek on 28th Street, and what 106 does is literally break 28th Street up into short neighborhood blocks, two or three houses each. I think that is in violation of the basic tenets that we were using to say that we wanted to use natural boundaries, and I know the map I submitted pushed District 3 out to Bear Creek as a smooth curving line. So as you consider and deliberate the maps, I would prefer that you consider 107 or 203 as the choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Walsh, and I live south of Bear Creek in Ada Givens neighborhood, and I'm here representing the Legal Women Voters of Merced County. The Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We encourage informed and active participation in government, and we work to increase understanding of major public policy issues. We have been in place in the United States for over 100 years, and we operate at the national, state, and local levels through more than 800 leagues in all 50 states, D.C., the Virgin Islands, and Puerto Rico. That's a little of our background. The Legal Women Voters of California made a major effort to promote public participation in redistricting and to follow redistricting activities throughout the state. I want to report that the city of Merced went above and beyond what the legal requirements were. They adopted a council-appointed citizen advisory committee. There were several public hearings, the league, and several other community organizations, and I won't speak for the NAACP, though I am a member of the NAACP. Both the league and the NAACP advertised these meetings and encouraged people to attend. Every question that I heard asked at the meeting was answered quickly and politely. I want to give praise to the consultant because those that we left with the consultant were answered promptly by email. I want to give praise to the city because clearly this was important to them as well. For months, the first thing you saw on the city website was the link to have input in redistricting. I'm here to support the effort and the results of the advisory committee. We don't have a particular map that we support, but we want to say congratulations to the city for its efforts, for citizen input, for responding to citizens, and for encouraging people to participate, and for taking on partners that included the Legal Women Voters and the NAACP and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Next speaker. Good evening, Jane.
Hello. My name is Diana Odom-Gunn. I live in the Courthouse Park neighborhood in downtown Merced. I'm president of the Merced Downtown Neighborhood Association, which represents a diverse group of residents in the historic downtown area, including homeowners and renters, but no business interests. We are confused and concerned by the regrettable comments at the February 7 council meeting from our friends in community organizing and two council members, which falsely suggest that showing up regularly to give testimony at committee hearings and workshops is somehow the same as undue influence on the process. We also wish there had been a more stern response to these accusations and better control of that meeting. However, our attitude is conciliatory and collaborative. We have invited and will continue to invite anyone with different views to meet with us. We will engage in respectful conversation to identify our shared priorities and find the best ways to work together toward progress in the city of Merced. I want to say this on the record, so there is no question about what we stand for. Despite the late but extensive advocacy for map 106, it is worth noting that it is substantially similar to the two committee-recommended maps, 107 and 203. Map 106 follows the same boundaries, roughly, and has the same number of Latino-majority CVA districts. That is, we have no issue with the substance of map 106, but the council's selection of map 106 would send a very damaging message to the community and its volunteers while accomplishing no real difference in representation. Our main concern is for the message this council may embrace with its folk tonight. Do you prioritize well-funded, politically-coordinated advocacy driven by outside organizations over your own highly transparent and politically-independent process? This council initiated its process way back in August of last year. Will this council now abandon the testimony of dozens of residents who attended the city-led workshops, gave input at the public hearings, and drew maps for consideration in favor of this last-minute push for a similar map with a different name on it? The city-designated process, followed by the redistricting advisory committee and participating residents, was designed to comply with federal and state laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next five speakers, please.
Okay, so the next five speakers, can I get Marissa Moraza, Lizeth Calderon, John Larson, Victoria Espinoza, and Matee Aguilar.
My name is Marissa Moraza. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I work with Power California. We work to harness the power of young people of color and their families to create communities that are equitable, inclusive, and just for everyone who calls California home, and that is why we have engaged community members and leaders in this process since September 2021, and we talk to residents year-round, and we have been engaging with community members since the 2020 census as well. And this is why we're voicing support for map 106, the Merced Forward Together map. It is essential to include voices of young people of color and their families in these processes that have historically excluded them. We have heard about the importance of complying with the Fair Maps Act, and also there was a great comment on the Voter Rights Act in Section 2 of the VRA, and it is important that we are really respecting the federal requirements of these maps, and that is something that's very important to consider as we are selecting a map. The VRA prohibits district maps that unlawfully dilute the voting power of any racial, ethnic, or language minority group, and so it's important to understand that this is why we talk about our specific communities. This is why we are raising these issues. We want to ensure that we can elect a candidate of choice, that we are able to see ourselves in these maps, that we want to be able to build roots in this community, and we hear time and time again that housing is the number-one issue, not only with young people but with our families, and that is what's driving this process. That is why folks are reaching out, and I also want to make a comment on process. We appreciate that we're able to still submit voicemails and emails as well. This is about accessibility. These meetings are not always accessible. We need to be able to show up however we can. It's difficult to be here on a Monday evening or even Saturday mornings when families are working, so it's important that we continue to have these opportunities and that we listen to communities throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
All right, y'all. Good evening, y'all. My name is Liz. Pronouns are they/them. Today's been a lot -- hearing a lot of public comments. Do we just want to note that the only time that I feel miserable is when I'm hearing attacks on the community work that we have been doing? A big part, I think, that is ignored is how inaccessible these processes are to folks, given the history and the background and not feeling welcomed, and so we are a resource for our community to hear about the processes in their own language with all the time for questions, really breaking it down, and so that's a bit on that. I do want to share my support for map 106. I will share that I currently live in District 6. I'm connected to the Merced College and to the growing development on Yosemite and G, and this is where students are living. This is where incoming students that are aiding and giving into the growth of Merced are wanting to live and wanting to find a home and, as folks have shared, ground roots in her Merced. So there is -- I feel like I'm looked at as an outsider, but I live in Merced. I'm looking to stay in Merced. This is how cities grow, and this is how we aid the growth and development of Merced City, is giving our testimony. I do want to share support for keeping Merced Community College and Development on Yosemite and G together. This is where students may live that go to Merced College and to feel symbolically that they are connected in a district is very, very important. I also saw that the Mercy Medical Center is divided directly from District 6 in one of the maps, and so I was a bit confused about that, given that keeping these sections together is important. And we're giving -- just with time, I do want to share my experience as a student renter. I used to live in District 5 in the Twilight area. I lived there for a while and was forced to move very constantly, very consistently. Every six months, every year, I was looking for a new lease, a new place that I could rent out because of the growing rent prices, and I lived -- I moved around a lot in that area, District 6 currently, in Twilight. Then afterwards, I moved into Phelps, remained in District 6. So seeing the upward division into District 6 is concerning. It divides primarily student renters, families that are moving out. Homeowners are then renting out to students, lived that experience as well. And it's important to maintain District 6, at least for myself, from Highway 59 down to North Gardner. This is a growing student population, students that are bringing their families, looking for opportunities, and to aid the growth and diversity of Merced City. And lastly, I will share that why do we think that corporate development is guiding this process? And it's because there is a clear division of the growing developments and students and growing developments and renters, specifically Merced College and the Merced Mall area. But more than anything, I'm glad to be a part of this process and to share my testimony. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good evening, sir. Three minutes.
Good evening, John Larson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to congratulate you on your showing of respect to the hard work that you've done and the mapmakers have done and the volunteers that suggested 107 and 203. They put a lot of effort in there, and you might respect their opinions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Good evening.
Buenos tardes. My name is Victoria Espinoza, and I currently live in District 4, and I just want to say I support map 106. But in my lifetime as a resident of Merced, I have lived in districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and I know this map was thoroughly researched to bring about equitable redistricting for the city of Merced. And in all the districts I have personally lived in, I know of the many disparities of the most vulnerable in our community. And also, I wanted to just make a quick comment about people saying about not participating in this workshop. I'm not affiliated with any organization but the Most High God. Nobody's paying me to be here, none of that, but there were some meetings that I know had super-low attendance, and they were on Saturdays, and in our faith tradition, that's our Sabbath, so I know that those didn't work out regardless, but we wouldn't have been able to attend those anyway for those workshops. But I did want to say that the Word of God says in Isaiah 1:17, "Learn to do well; seek judgment; relieve the oppressed; judge the fatherless; to defend the fatherless, plead for the widow." In Leviticus 19:15, it says, "Ye shall do no unrighteousness in judgment; thou shalt not respect the person of the poor, nor honor the person of the mighty; but in righteousness shalt thou judge thy neighbor." So I urge you to choose map 106. Be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matee Aguilar, and I live in District 4 of the city of Merced. I'm here in support of map 106, the Merced Forward Together, and I just want to say we're not outsiders. We live here, we pay taxes here, we vote here, so please, when you hear those comments, we're not outsiders. Map 106 creates three districts with Latino CVA of over 50%, prioritizes keeping communities of interest whole as an outline by the Fair Maps Act, and will ensure a smaller percentage of population deviation. Why does it matter that map creates three Latino-majority-minority CVA districts in Section 2 of the Voting
And I just want to say we're not outsiders. We live here, we pay taxes here, we vote here. So please, when you make, when you hear those comments, we're not outsiders. MAP 106 creates three districts with Latino CIBAP over 50%, prioritizes keeping communities of interest whole as an outlier by the Fair Map Act, and would ensure a smaller percentage of population deviation. Why does it matter that MAP creates three Latino-majority-minority CIBAP districts? And Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits voting practices or procedures that discriminate on the basis of race, ethnicity, and language. Because of this, line drawers must create district maps with one or more majority-minority districts. When the minority group is at large enough to constitute the majority of the voting population in a geographically compact district, the group is politically cohesive, and the majority group votes as a bloc to usually defeat the minority group's preferred candidate. And looking at the whole picture, the minority group in the electoral process and elect the candidate of their choice than the majority group. Being that Latinos are the largest voting bloc, they must be accounted for in each district maps accordingly with majority-minority districts. In other words, we need three majority Latinos in our districts. Please support MAP 106, the Merced Forward Together. Thank you.
Next five speakers, Jen.
Okay, so next five speakers. Can I get Ping Chaveng, Astrid Morales, Dominique Kelly, and Athenia Flores, and Rosa in Guanzano, or in Guanzo?
Hello, my name is Ping Chaveng, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm with the Party of Socialism and Liberation. I wanted to talk about neighborhood Lothbro. It's, this neighborhood is often low-income families and very impoverished. And so I'm urging the city council to not vote for MAP 107. If you look at MAP 107, it divides the Lothbro Street into District 5 and District 4. This neighborhood is often facing poverty, and I had the opportunity to canvass in this neighborhood and knock on their doors, to meet the residents and to get, collect signatures for a ballot, for a petition, for the state election. And meeting the neighborhood here, the people have told me that one of the barriers that they face is time, not having enough time. And I can understand that in your neighborhood impoverished, you don't have a lot of time. So if you vote for MAP 107 dividing this neighborhood, they wouldn't have the time to speak to two representatives. But it would be a lot easier to talk to one representative, to represent this neighborhood and to help this neighborhood and what barriers they're facing, what the life is like for them. And so I'm urging the city council to not vote for MAP 107 as it divides this neighborhood into two districts. And we don't want to divide community of interests. MAP 107 gerrymanders and divides neighborhood Lothbro into half. And I'm urging the city council to vote for MAP 106 as it keeps community of interests together. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Astrid. My pronouns are she/her's, and I'm a community member in District 4, near Portal Plaza and churches. I also am a UC Merced student, well, I was, and I graduated. So I just want to say that there's a lot of UC Merced students who choose to stay in Merced, choose to stay in the Central Valley. I am one of those students. I now live here. I graduated back in, I don't know, like 2021, year 2022. And I'm just like, based off hearing a lot of those voicemails, it's very discouraging to hear a lot of folks referring to the youth as children. These people are your future? And it's kind of offensive that people are saying that. I've done high school presentations. I've seen students break down in front of me because they're scared of their community members. They've heard them laugh at their face. That's not okay. You know, that's just not okay. So I just wanted to make that clear, that the youth are the future, and that's why I support MAP 106. You know, it includes a Latino community, it includes the youth, and this is input we've taken from everyone in the community. It took a lot of planning, as Marissa has stated, which is why, you know, I support MAP 106, and I hope, city council members, I hope that you also support MAP 106. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Rosin Guanzo, and I'm here in support of MAP 106, Merced Forward Together. It meets the requirements of the Fair Maps Act by keeping communities of interest whole, Chris-3 Latino-majority CIBAP compliance districts, and its technical signs. Along the restricting process, we have seen a poor attempt at community engagement, poor translation of Spanish-language testimony in what has looked like a dismissal of community interest testimony. We are concerned that by ignoring the ranky criteria of the Fair Maps Act, the city of Merced is placing itself at risk for legal challenges, a costly process that is funded by public dollars. That is why we urge the city council to give careful attention to federal and state rule compliance, especially when it comes to communities of interest testimony and honoring the community's right to elect their representatives, not the opposite. We deserve equal representation, no matter of color, background, or zip code. Most of us believe that borders should peak our leaders. Our leaders should not peak their borders to determine how will be represented and how funds for schools, hospitals, and other essential services will be allocated. That is why we come together every decade.
You could pause the speaker. Ronnie, if you could. Sorry, I know you got an important phone call. All right, we apologize. Just wanted, didn't want anybody to, we wanted you to be heard, so I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Okay, we deserve equal representation, no matter of color, background, or zip code. Most of us believe that borders should peak our leaders. Our leaders should not peak their borders to determine how will be represented and how funds for schools, hospitals, and other essential services will be allocated. That is why we come together every decade to draw the new district lines that give each of our borders equal weight. Each of our voices equal and each of our communities equal resources. MAP 106 took into consideration dozens of comments for community members to draw the lines. This map is very important to our communities because we need to keep together of communities of interest whole. Please support MAP 106 or use it as a guide for creating a compliant and fair map. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm sure, can I move it?
Yeah, of course.
Sorry. Hey, good evening to you all. Last time I gave a public comment, I misspoke on February 7 and said I supported MAP 107, but I was referring to MAP 106 at the time, so now I do. I technically live in about, I'm looking at the map more clearly right now, about three districts from 5, 4. I'm right on the border of 5, 4, and 3. I live on West 24th Street, right next to railroad. That's fun. So, yeah. I came here just to show my support for MAP Forward Together 106. I dimmed that all the maps do present all good quality points, but I felt that the map that whichever one that's chosen, guys got a heavy load there, whichever one that's chosen should highly reflect what's best for all six community districts for both residents and businesses. I trust that MAP 106 shows potential future growth for all of our communities, for residents, old, new, businesses. The new redistricting map that was created needs to be fair for all. I urge the city council members to work on creating more homes for residents, seniors, veterans, and low-income families, first-time homebuyers that may be at actual affordable prices that don't go raised up due to, you know, relatives that may raise prices. I live near a location back of where Walmart is, and those were at $240,000. They went up really high when I was seeing myself considering one. So, yeah, that's what I'm referring to, and don't mean to be rude, disrespectful. So that our city sees less homelessness in our streets and our business parking lots, also have more shops and business to create jobs for our residents to not have to travel out of town to look for businesses, like jobs. So we can have jobs here for our residents to help our city grow. We should repair our streets and buildings so that tourists may admire our historical cities, so we, they can see how we progress. As for example, if you guys have to go out for a special event, graduation prom, something like that for your grandkids or your kids, are we going to the mall here or are you guys going out to Modesto or Fresno? It's a thing to consider. We want positive, you know, feedback from our city as well. The new restricted map needs to meet the Fair Map Act. The adjustments made to MAP 106 took in consideration factors of changes that may occur in the next decade. That shows potential economic development for all residents, growth for current new and businesses, along with green space that perhaps creates recreational sports and community events that can draw in visitors. Society has changed over the years, most importantly due to the dramatic change caused by COVID. We all have to learn to grow as a world community on working together. Historical shops, buildings, and businesses have been around for decades. After all, they are the one that created our growth of population is where it is to now.
How much further do you have? I gotta, I gotta cut you off after three minutes.
Sorry.
Did you have, you're almost done, or?
No, I just wanted to state fact that we shouldn't forget our historical buildings, just basically to embrace what's new, the new generation has to come. I support MAP 106.
All right, thank you. We're working on getting those trains a little quieter too for you, so. We'll try to quiet them down a little bit for you.
Dominique Kelly? I don't know if you're still here.
Dominique Kelly. Once, going twice.
Can I get the next five speakers? Jeremy Vermandy, Gloria Sandoval, Alicia Fernandez, Nevia Mendoza, and Ale.
How many more speakers do we have after these five?
We have five more.
Mr. Vermandy, good to see you. Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and the city council. My name is Jeremy Vermandy, a three-year undergrad from UC Merced and an intern for AFSCME 3299. And I'm a resident from District 5, and I stand by here today to call on the city council to support District MAP 106, strongly abides by the Fair Map Act. If there's anything we have learned from the peak of the student housing crisis last year is that student welfare is not disposable but rather powerful. Yes, soaring housing prices, the ongoing housing shortage, and an inequitable path towards homeownership continue to pose socioeconomic challenges on low-income residents and generational homeowners on all districts. But with this specific district map, all residents will be given the chance to equally participate and engage in the decision-making process without any unnecessary barriers underway, such as language barriers. Undergrads, graduates, post-docs, faculty, and staff are bearing the uncertainty behind traveling miles away to work and actively participate in the city's decision-making process due to the lack of affordable housing that continues to be happening today. It is my firm belief that racial equity, housing equity, healthcare equity, job equity, and all else should not be partisan. The city of Merced must break the status quo and have its doors open for responsible, apathetic, passionate, and talented constituents living in safe communities of interests. Together, residents of all backgrounds and small businesses, we can make our local democracy prevail. District 106 embodies who we are as Mercedians. In District 5, home of working families, shopping and commercial centers like Merced Mall are the first stops students love to go and enjoy amenities. In District 6, developing ranch neighborhoods, the villages, neighborhoods, and El Redondo are strong hotspots for student population and BIPOC communities. Ms. Mayor, allow me to make this declaration straight. District 106 is the way to go. In short, vote for District MAP 106 to maintain neighborhoods equally represented by the majority, under identifiable and respectful boundaries. It's the most democratic map future generations will be grateful, and allow every district to prosper economically and equitably. It is long overdue to correct the wrongs of our time. I yield the floor.
Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, Gloria.
Gloria Sandoval. I also want to support MAP 106 for a lot of different reasons, but the main one, I think, is the map that shows the least deviation in population. And I think that, you know, it's important that our districts are equal in population number. I know that some people might want to more focus on the voting people, or some people want to focus more on the potential voters, et cetera. But I really feel that it's important to give support to the enthusiasm of the young people that are showing this kind of participation. I recall back quite a long time ago when there were no districting. I think we're getting a little bit more democratic in this city. At one, once upon a time, we never had anybody in the South Side. I think we're getting better. I also think, though, that some of the aspects of this process needs to include where we have like a clinic, like the South Side is so proud of having a clinic. I recall, we were involved in a debate in this community about Alicia Reyes School. Before it was built, there was only interest in building to the north because supposedly all the, all the reports were to go to the, you know, to north. But, you know, there were some actions, some people that disagreed because the population, the growth was happening in the South Side. We don't want no blessing, okay? So what happened was, with the interest of the community, we actually got two schools. And I'm proud because I think sometimes it's hard for people to embrace change, you know? And at my age of 72, I am embracing the change, you know? So I support MAP 106. If they're so similar, go with the enthusiasm. Support MAP 106. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Next speaker. Sorry you have to follow Ms. Sandoval.
Hello, my name is Alicia Fernandez. I use she/her pronouns, and I live in Merced. I define my community as Beechwood. I am a high school student at Buja Colony High, and I am in support of MAP 106, the Merced Forward Together map. It is important that my community remains together and be able to elect a candidate that represents us. Please support MAP 106. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nevia Mendoza. I use she/her pronouns, and I live in Merced. I define my community as Beechwood also. I'm a high school student at Merced High School, and I'm in support of MAP 106, the Merced Forward Together map. It is important that my community remains together and be able to elect a candidate that represents us. MAP 106 creates three districts with Latino CIBAP over 50%, prioritizes keeping communities of interest whole, and would ensure a smaller percentage of population deviation. This map also takes into account current and future growth of the city in District 6. This is an opportunity to create districts that center the needs of residents such as housing needs, completing neighborhoods, and improving infrastructure and building deep roots in the city of Merced. Please support MAP 106. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, Ale.
Good evening, council. My name's Ale, and I'm here today to show support for MAP 106. I've lived in Merced for almost 10 years now. I came as a student but decided to stay, so I call Merced my home. This is about to be the city that I've lived for most of my life. And throughout that time, I've seen the impacts. Sorry, I think I clicked something. Throughout that time, I've been able to see the impacts that these districts create, right? So I work with community, and we get to see the disparities and inequities. And I think us coming here today and coming every council meeting and trying to inform ourselves and educate and break down the information for young people is to address those inequities. And so there's a lot of work that goes into this. We're not outsiders. We live here. The young people you keep seeing coming to council are young people that live here and that work a lot to be able to come up here and speak their truth and speak on behalf of their families that sometimes can't understand a language or find it hard to navigate this country. And so, yeah, we're trying to do our best, and for us, MAP 106 represents our communities and gives us the most hope for a future we can have a better, equitable Merced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next five, please, Jennifer.
Okay, can I get Janet Casper, Sheng Zhang? Okay, can I get Janet Casper, Sheng Zhang, Blanca Ojeda, Ronnie Deanda, and Gloria Conlin?
Hello, my name is Janet Aplin Casper. I had no intention on speaking today, so I'm gonna kind of bumble through. I was actually on the commission. I was an appointee. I was on the commission as at-large. First off, my hat goes off to each and everybody who submitted the maps. I know that it was a very difficult task, because I sat down in the evenings with your maps. I did transparencies, I did layers over the top. This commission, we really worked hard looking at the maps. So, we wanted to make sure that we, we got it right and that we were representing everybody. I attended every single commission meeting. I wish most of you would have been at those, because we could have really used a lot of your feedback today there. I attended all the workshops, and I've also attended the hearings via Zoom. The commission, we followed all the guidelines. I just want to, you know, rest assured, we really did our best. Each of us on the commission, we also were tasked with reaching out to the residents in our districts and coming back with that feedback as well. We were not aware of who or what organizations took and submitted a map. All we had was numbers, and that's all that we went by. We had no clue until we started having the hearings and the people in the audience were coming up with names for the maps. We had no clue, we just went with numbers. Personally, when I looked at the maps, I looked for natural boundaries, keeping neighborhoods together, and trying to get rid of the little finger pieces, because as you're trying, as you guys know that did the maps, getting things to balance, getting those, the votes to balance was kind of a difficult, and sometimes you'd have a finger here and one there. And so, we did our best to try and do that. So, I just wanted to go ahead, come up here today, and thank you all for being here today, and thank you for submitting the maps that you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next speaker.
Good evening, City Council, Audience members. Sheng Zhang with Leadership Council, she/her pronouns. I just want to express our support for Map 106 as well. I know that it's, you know, it must be a difficult decision with all these comments tonight, which is a great turnout by everybody, but I want to go back to when we were at-large. And, you know, at that time, nobody complained that all of the council members were from North Merced. So, it, it took a lawsuit, right? It took a lawsuit to get representation for all of Merced. And so, when we talk about representation and these redistricting maps, I mean, people of color make up 75% of the city of Merced, and so at least four of those districts should be POC majority, but that's not even the case here. At least with Map 106, you have three of the districts with POC majority. And so, it's important that we see the representation and the viability of candidates of color being able to run in their districts and actually having a chance at winning. That's why the lawsuit came out in the first place, because that was not happening. So, that's why we support Map 106. And to, you know, to make the point about like the, the weird lines and boundaries, even Map 203 breaks up the, using Buena Vista and Donna and breaking up those, when you're across the street, I mean, you could just be as critical of Map 203 as you are of Map 106, that they breaks those neighborhoods up when they're right across the street from each other. And so, it really is about, you know, who, what you're picking and the community that's out here speaking today, and I love what Ms. Sandoval said about whether the maps are so similar, go with the one with more enthusiasm. Those people are showing up tonight to let you know that that's what they support. And I also want to say, while you have a very thoughtful process in your committee selection and all of that, that doesn't mean that people can't also submit maps, right? If the people in, on that commission had thought more about the representation of their map, I would support that. But it took people on the outside submitting another map to get the representation correct a little more accurately. So, I support Map 106. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ms. Ojeda, welcome.
Hello, City Council members. I'm very excited to be here tonight and hear just all of the comments and the support for Map 106. I want to share that I also support Map 106. And we appreciated, we, well, I appreciate the city's process to do the outreach and the effort that it took to create the maps. However, you know, as you've heard, for some of the families, it's really hard to be in these meetings. So, many of us are sharing from what we've heard from community members, many of us from our own family members who oftentimes have a language barrier, and I feel like Map 106 represents the communities of interest, and it keeps them together. I'm super excited to see all of the involvement and effort of young people that worked really hard to create Map 106 with the information that they heard, again, coming from family members that usually cannot understand because of the language barrier, right? So, it makes it a little bit harder for them. So, they took it upon themselves to like go outside and do this work, and I feel like, you know, if there are similarities between map, again, I'm very excited to hear, I'm gonna echo what Sheng said, Ms. Sandoval say, you know? And I feel like it's beautiful to see all of the involvement, especially from the youth, that, you know, once upon a time, I don't think we had this level of energy in the past, and I feel like we have it today, so let's go with that. Let's support Map 106. Thank you.
Ms. Conlin, welcome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all the hard work that was done by the council and the redistricting committee, and I just have a few words to say here, kind of in summary, and that is, the city-designated process, followed by the redistricting advisory committee and participating residents, was designed to comply with federal and state law requirements, and it did. And by the way, the same groups now complaining about the results of that process are the ones who pushed for an independent committee rather than an in-house process. Volunteers on the advisory committee performed their task exactly as directed, putting out successful efforts and rallying robust public participation. The two maps advanced by the committee are the product of this council's direction and an open process to distill the common themes and principles from public comment over many months of diligent work. What kind of message will this council send to the community tonight? Does the council support the integrity of its own process? Or is the council swayed by loud voices of outside activists? The committee wants to rely on consistency of its elected leaders. Volunteers on boards and commissions want to know that their work and input will be valued, not discarded, that they will be thanked, not insulted. The Downtown Neighborhood Association, which is the neighborhoods, not the business, trusts the council to do the right thing. And really, we're not asking for a specific single map. Whatever is decided on will be fine with, with us. We're just asking for the result that unifies the committee, the community, and promotes healing. Thank you.
Yes. Ronnie, did you submit a request to speak for me?
Hello, Merced.
Hello.
State Council, members in the audience. My name is Ronnie Deanda. I'm familiar to some of you, and some of you don't know who I am and probably couldn't care less. And that's okay. This is what it's all about. However, however, I was a member of this committee. I was asked to be. At first, I thought, no, and then I said, yes, I could do this. And then the following week, somebody said, hey, we need somebody on the planning commission. And I thought about that for a while, and I said, no, I can't do both at the same time. But then, when I thought a little more about it, I said, you know what? I do want to serve on the planning committee. So, after a while, I have a planning commission to go to, and that's fine. Now, getting down to this, I want to ask all you young people that came up here today, how many of you went to any of our, our meetings?
We have where?
You're what? How many of you went?
Ronnie, Ronnie, Ronnie.
I see there's, there's a bunch of you here, but not many of you at our meetings.
Ronnie, Ronnie, you gotta, you talked to us, talked to us.
All right.
You speak, it's not interactive.
Gotcha.
Tell us what you think.
Gotcha. But anyway, it, it, you know, it's, it's kind of funny. We got a lot of young people here, and they did a great job. Look at the numbers of people they got out here tonight, but they weren't there at any of us. You gave us a job to do, and we did that job to the best of our ability. We came back with two maps, and we think we're justified. You need to look at those very closely before you take on something from the outside. I appreciate what they all said. Good. But with that all being done and said, it's on your shoulders now as to what is selected. We gave you two good maps to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Any other speakers, Jennifer?
I do have three more speakers. Can I get Fu Zhang, Loretta Spence, and Chris Atima?
Hello, my name is Fu Zhang. Gender pronouns, he/him/his, and I support Map 106. It incorporates community input and reflects our communities of interest. We need to ensure that this redistricting process is not politically motivated by those that want to marginalize the collective power of those marginalized. Both maps recommended by the advisory committee do not reflect the shared interests of our communities. Map 107 seeks to divide the Lothborough neighborhood, effectively dividing the collective voices of that community. And this is despite the presentation showing that the Lothborough community is a community of interest that should not be divided. Both maps, 107 and 203, seeks to include the affluent neighborhoods of South Bear Creek with downtown Merced. Both maps reduces the voices of communities of interest, one by dividing a shared neighborhood, and both by including an affluent neighborhood to offset the voices of the shared marginalized communities. The advisory committee was established with the understanding that the council has no obligation to adopt the maps recommended by the advisory board. Maybe they and some members of the audience here do not understand that. And we are not deaf to the racist dog whistles of outsiders for minorities and Hispanics. Map 106 divides Merced into six districts and keeps communities of interest together. It recognizes the voices of marginalized communities and projects the future development of Merced. Map 106 was developed with community input and should be adopted by the city. Thank you.
Buenas noches, council members and community, Cristan tema, Gallardo, my gender pronouns are she/her's, ella. And I'm here once again just to reiterate what many young people and community members have been stating. We support Map 106, Merced Forward Together. I, I'm gonna repeat this, because I think it's really important history of this city. I grew up here, I live here, this is my community, and I've been organizing here for more than a decade. And I always ground my organizing in one cultural teaching. We learn from the past, preparing the present to defend the future. And something that I've seen that in this city, Black indigenous people of color always have to fight just to get their basic rights heard and be represented equitably. Sheng mentioned this. Back in the day, before this city faced legal action, everyone that sat on that council lived in North Merced, and they were expected to be representing folks in South District One, District Two, right? And so, then, when the lawsuit happened and the city, the city finally moved to districts, I literally saw how some of these same associations were the ones that submitted the map that currently stands, even though there were other maps that had community support and had, you know, been drawn by community members. And I think it's important for us to not just listen to the status quo, you know, the white folks, white families that are used to getting their, you know, that are used to influencing the decisions that are made by city council. Those days are gone. Our population is mostly non-white, communities of color, working families, right? Not folks that live in downtown or own businesses. We're renters, we're low-income, we're farmworkers, and we're, we want to be represented politically with Map 106. I also want to just name that it's also really discouraging for me and other community members to show up and, you know, be part of the process. We, we were showing up to those hearings. We also went above and beyond and drew a map, engaged community members on our own without having to do that. But we do it because we love this city, and we're tired of not having city council listen to us, right? Like, the status quo, these associations that live in downtown continue to say that, you know, what would it look like if the city doesn't listen to us? What, what, what would it look like if the city continues in 2022 to keep Black and Brown communities out? What would that look like? We need courageous leadership in this city. Elections are coming up, and trust, we, we know that there's some of y'all that are up for reelection, and you need to listen to what constituents are saying, not just these white folks in downtown.
Next speaker. Everybody. Ms. Spence. Look, can everybody please be quiet? If you guys keep talking, you're all gonna, you're all gone, all right? Nobody talks. Listen to her, it's her turn to speak. All right? This is your job, use your chance to address us. You don't need to fight and bicker amongst yourselves. All right? Go.
Good morning, City Council, the mayor and City Council. My name is Loretta Spence. I live in District Five, and I've been to many map drawing sessions, and everyone has worked hard to draw the map. I also am in the business arena, but I also is in the community as well. So, I can't think of just me, I have to think of what my community wants. And in the sessions that I've been in, the community wants the map 106, Merced Forward map. And the reason is because working families are being represented in that map, and also population is reflected on the way that the map is drawn. And so, and also, for me, I see the business and the community in the map. So, it's, it's both of them that are in the map, so I think that's pretty fair. And so, I would just like to ask the City Council if they would consider Map 106. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jocelyn. My pronouns are she, they, he. And tonight, I just have thoughts. I feel like everyone talking about Map 106, 106 touched on parts that I would want to say, but they already said them. So, I just want to say that I don't know how each of you would choose to decide, but while you are all listening, I ask that y'all continue considering Map 106, and that it has the smallest deviation compared to Map 107 and 203. Something that I want to say is that Map 107 and Map 203 that were suggested by the advisory committee, and I don't know about y'all, but it's weird to me that they suggested two maps that look extremely different. You're telling me that these two way different maps have similar representation? Map 107 separates an obvious student housing section. Why would they suggest that? I heard earlier that someone said that y'all should respect the decision of the advisory committee, and I think that you are all doing that by taking their suggestions into consideration. But that doesn't mean that you have to choose one of the maps that they suggested. And I've said enough, but everyone else said what I wanted to say. But yeah, I just want to say again that I support Map 106.
Any other speakers, Jennifer?
Those are all the speaker cards that I have.
Okay, last chance, if you want to turn the speaker card. All right, closing the public hearing, bringing it back to council. I want to thank everybody for their comments, want to thank everybody for their involvement throughout this process. We've done our best to, to get as much input as possible, to have as thorough and as transparent a process as possible. We went through our redistricting advisory committee, other people submitted maps as well. You know, ultimately, the decision is ours. We, we hear the, the process. We, we hear the, the process, we hear, you know, maps that are recommended to us, and now it's our turn to discuss it. Again, I want to thank everybody who was involved, everybody for fighting for what they believe, everybody for fighting for the best map that they believe, that they believe in, and fighting for their community. Everybody, younger, older, no matter what your race, fighting for what you believe is best for this town. I think everybody genuinely comes from a good place and everybody genuinely comes and fights for what they believe is best. But in the end, unfortunately, sometimes I think that gets lost and people start to bicker much more than they should. But at the end of the day, we're all fighting for our town. Everybody is from here, everybody belongs here, and everybody wants the best for this town. So now it's upon us, the people you elected, and people I think who share a similar belief that we're all, again, fighting for what we feel is best for this town. And I think it's on us now to decide. Next 10 years of Merced, ladies and gentlemen, the future is upon us right now. Who wants to be the first? It seems to me, just kind of narrowing, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but 203 and 106 seem to be the two maps that are gaining the most support and seem to have, you know, just in some of the comments from the last council meeting as well, it seems like 203 and 106 are the, kind of the two finalists. Does anybody feel otherwise, that there are other maps that they want to discuss as well to start? Okay. Go ahead, Fran. You guys can use, we're back here finally at the dais, so people can use the request to speak buttons if they want, or else signal me as well, and either way. So go ahead if you want to start.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I also want to thank the audience for taking the time to come here. Older people, the middle-aged people, the young people, all the people, and especially the little girl right there, she's, she's gonna, she's gonna learn a lot about democracy. Originally, I was from Atwater, I ran an at-large election there. I was a nobody, complete nobody, but I was for the Latina movement in impoverished communities. And I garnered 700 votes with a $1,000 campaign contribution that I made to myself. Others were putting in $15,000, $20,000. Like I said, it was an at-large. I saw the complex, unlevel playing fields in the at-large in Atwater, and I chose to seek litigation, which we did. Shankman, it's in the Sun Star, 2018, came in and assisted me, and we got that divided into districts. We got that divided. So there was more level playing field. After my first divorce, I came to Merced, rented, now I bought a house. But I can tell you that District 2 was something I wanted to be involved in, especially after we found out that it came into districts and we're split up more fair, more fair instead of at-large, like the other speakers have said. Most of the council people have been from North Merced, which is, you know, it's a good thing, but we need fair voices, and so we need to have that split up. And now, as you can see at their council members, there's more level playing field with three Latinos and one Latino woman up here in the dais. I have always looked at the maps, districting, and I've always supported Map 106. Bottom line, period. It gives us the most. There's a number of key points. For me, I don't want them slicing off, you know, 127 votes as to what my rough calculations are, coming from downtown, which has a huge power base, as you know, huge voice, rightfully so, they've been there, but they gotta listen to us now and sometimes they just don't like it. So you're here to listen and to learn. The Latino movement and the Latinos are deserving. Black folk, Asian folk, and men folk are deserving of representation. And that is something that has been neglected for decades, decades. So I'm here to voice my support for 106. Obviously, everybody knows I've already started my reelection campaign, I'm not going to talk about it, but for those that we are going to get reelected.
We gotta keep.
We need to focus on.
No, no campaigning in.
No, we need to focus on listening to the people. That's what we are elected for, and that's what I'm elected for, okay? It's not that I'm out here preaching what I want to preach and believe in, it's that I'm listening to you all, bottom line. And so that's just the way I have to voice my opinion on this, but I can tell you right now that there's a lot of unfairity with the other district maps being brought forth. And so once again, I explain that I am in supportive of Map 106, and I ask that my fellow council members and mayor choose that map as well and reject these two other maps. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Who wants to go next? Let's go down the line, or does anybody want to speak next? Okay, Ken.
I, I just want to say, I think focusing on race is, is just going to continue to divide this city. I don't think it's the right path. I think if we look at the Fair Employment and Housing Act, it states that no racial gerrymandering can be considered. And any consideration of race, racial gerrymandering throughout this process is discriminatory and very inappropriate. Consider neighborhoods, things like landmarks, equal population, but under no circumstances should we consider race. I think we need to stop with the race mongering and the division. I think it's just hurting us as a city. I think it's insulting to, to any race in the city of Merced, you know, to insinuate that residents of the city of Merced vote strictly based off of race. The residents I know in this city are hardworking, free-thinking people who can vote, I'm sorry, vote based off of things like political agendas, morals, and how the candidates' beliefs line up with their own. I would say, you know, even in this process, if somebody was, there was an insinuation of racism or bias, I don't know what you want to say, but, because they pointed out that we should listen to the content of a message as opposed to the sheer volume of canned messages. I think everybody's just saying what everybody up here is probably scared to say. Thank you. That's not racist, that's just pointing out a very logical and obvious approach that anybody should make when, when considering an item. To that end, I'm, I'm very, very proud, extremely proud of the very, 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 very diverse committee that we all appointed. Every single one of us up here appointed. A very diverse committee, would you agree? Very diverse, correct? That we appointed to make the decision, and I, I stand by their work, their commitment to this city and their eagerness to volunteer through what has been proven to be a less than supportive process, frankly. So, I mean, as far as the maps go, I mean, God, with the naked eye. I don't like 107 because it cuts Laughborough. I don't like that. I support Map 203. I give deference to the committee and dignity to the committee and that process and the work they did, and that's the map that I will vote for is 203.
Next speaker? Ms. Boyle?
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you all coming on. I also appreciate the committee and taking the time. It was a lengthy process. And I appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into over the last week. You know, I was re-watching all the redistricting committee meetings to see the comments that people were coming to, and these are the residents that did take the time out of their Saturdays to speak about what, what communities need to stay together. And one of the reasons why I also watched this last week is that our first public hearing, we had a lot of people coming out and support of, you know, the Map 106. And I said, okay, well, what were the reasonings? And I didn't see anyone that came, and I understand if you had work and other obligations, I completely understand that. But that was the time to come and speak about what communities you wanted to see together. You know, looking at Map 107, it separates Laughborough, which I am glad that we're not even going to be looking at that map. I don't approve, I don't approve of that at all. I don't want to see Laughborough split up ever. You know, and the whole process is, we did appoint these people to sit on this committee, and I hear this snickering, it's like, oh, it's not diverse enough. I mean, diversity goes beyond just your race, it's your age, it's your occupation. And I think that's really unfair to hear these comments from people. So, you know, we appointed this committee and to, to put forth their selections, and for us to go back and say, oh, yeah, we're not for that, I just, I just, there's this process that's put in place, and there were multiple opportunities during the committee meetings for our residents to come forward to distinguish which communities they'd like to see stay together with different communities of interest. And like Kevin Blank said, you know, it's, what are the easy identifiable, identifiable boundaries? I think I have the most identifiable boundary right now. It's a perfect square. And I know I'm not going to have that perfect square after this process, which I'm okay with, but I look at District, or Map 203, and I can say, you know, it's west of G Street, it follows along Bear Creek, a little bit south of Yosemite Avenue to the Highway 59 and so forth. And those are the things that I have to sit and I'm processing, like, why are we choosing these maps? And that's one of the reasons why I'm choosing Map 20, 203. There's no fingers. And, let's see what else I put. And then also, you know, we're looking at the data as well, we're not just looking at these, the photos of these maps. If you were to pull the data, 203 has the height, has the same ratios as the 106. There might be a few different areas, but I'm looking at these numbers and I'm still seeing like these equal out on the population just based on race alone. And so this is, these were some of the questions, you know, I had as going through, going through this. So at the end of the day, you know, I believe that Map 203 defines, you know, the accurate, or accurately with the process that was put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? I'll go.
Yeah, thank you. So I do want to thank everyone for participating in this. Obviously, it's, it's a lengthy process, it's very detailed, it's charismatic. I, I totally understand. I'm appreciative of each of you that have come out, that have done the work to draw maps, to get up and speak, those that can't be here, so on and so forth. And so, right off the back, I, I don't support 107. So in regards to 106 and 203, bit of a lot, we've had a lot of comments on either side. And a couple meetings ago, there was many comments made about Map 106, and so I sought to understand, right? Maybe there was something I was missing. And so I met with a ton of groups, the Hispanic Chamber, NACP, other community groups, so on and so forth. In fact, I even met with your guys' group, right? And one of the things I just want to say really quick is, Lizette, I really appreciate you. I appreciate how methodical and respectful you are. You, you definitely exhibited what I think leaders for young people should. And just so you know, I'm going to put a call into your boss for that, and that is something that we haven't experienced lately from many of these people that are here, so thank you for that. And if, I look forward to working with you in the future, no matter how this vote plays out. And so, as I sought to, to understand and talk to people, you know, many people weren't polled, like, there was a claim, others were, so on and so forth. Just a couple of thoughts here also. So many of the comments here are predicated on race, right? There's this ask for transparency, there's this ask for equity, there's this ask for inclusion, so on and so forth. But I'm always baffled how people so easily can hide under the osmosis of race and come up and say, we have an agenda for Latinos only, right? When there's more than Latinos that are in this community. And one of the things I don't understand, you know, we get the snickering and the comments, you know, surrounding race, and if we were truly going by percentages, for black people, we didn't have a seat at the table. So I'm not, I don't understand like the non-equity in, in all of this, right? If we're saying it's equity for all, all means all, and that's every person, whether you live in North, South, East, West Merced, so on and so forth. The other thing is, you know, there's, there's this ongoing ask, right, to follow the rules, right? But many people get up here again and speak to race, and your own attorney, right, from many of the groups who are here, were on that call, and I asked him point blank, can this be considered? And his exact comment was, it's illegal, right? And so, I'm, I'm a little lost, I'm a little lost in all this. For the sake of time, a, a few things that, that I do want to say. I'm actually largely disappointed in all the maps and how South Merced wasn't stretched North and East and West, and I have been very vocal about that. If you're talking about leveraging and getting in the best position to be able to attract businesses and additional builders, one would think that you would stretch the borders to the point where people that are looking at that area would have established entities that would attract them to want to build in those specific areas. I don't know why South Merced was left how it was, but man, if we're talking about South Merced seeing a new day, that's where some of the work needs to be. The other thing, just very quickly, that I want to say is, I can't deny 106 is a heck of a map. And I will say, Liz, you helped me understand that, 106 is a heck of a map. But there's one large point in this, well, there's two, I want to say. You get to elect the people, and I've said this many a time, especially with the idle threats of many of our reelection, right? Go rally the people, and just like I've said before, convince them not to vote for us ever again. You get that choice, right? But one of the things is, you know, no one's not going to make the right decision because of a threat of not being reelected. So, quick two more points. Mayor, if you would oblige me really quick, is, so we elected a commission, and there's often times that people come up to the dais and they're asking for community engagement. And so, what do we do? We give you community engagement. And each one of us up here had the ability, whether we did our homework or not, to find that right person. We all had a voice, we all had to say so, and each one of us had the opportunity to put someone forward, and which we did. So if you don't like the person you vote forward, right, then you yourself made a bad decision, and that's a decision that you have to assume, but you can't speak for the rest of the other people that we have all put forth on this commission. In fact, they were very, it was very diverse. If you're talking about every ethnicity group, if this is about race, right? Getting a seat at the table, they did. If you're talking about men and women, they did, right? If you're talking about everyone being able to speak up, they have the opportunity, right? And so, I stand by my selection, Dr. Jennifer Jones, right? Competent, well researched, she gave of her time and talent. And although everyone here may not like the outcome, right? These people did what we asked them to do, and they did the right thing. And so, on that merit alone, I stand on 203, and, and it's a, it's a generally better map. I'm going to be so, so bold to say this, right? If this probably wasn't predicated largely on race and disrespect, you probably would have had me won over with all the meetings I had with Lizette. Thank you.
Jesse Bertha, would you guys like to make any comments?
I'll make a comment. I, I support Map 106. I just have one question. Stephanie, can you remind us of why we appointed a committee and what was the direction that we gave?
The, the committee was appointed to represent the community at the council's direction and to engage in this process.
And Stephanie, can you tell me why when I asked who submitted the maps, why I wasn't given that information and the chair of the committee was?
On January 21st, a Public Records Act, Act request was submitted to the chair of the committee and to the city of Merced, and only two maps were disclosed as part of the Public Records Request Act. Would you like me to pause and wait for Ms. Bertha?
Sure.
I'm not, I was waiting for you to return to finish.
No, no, I would, I just wanted you to answer that question, I know the answer.
Anything else, Bertha or Lizette? Anything else, Bertha or Seth?
Yeah, I just want to know why the chair of the committee had the names of the people who submitted the maps? And if you think that that compromised the integrity of the process?
Do... Go ahead, Kim, if you...
Yes, I can speak to that. There was a PRA request, and the author of at least two maps was provided in response to a PRA.
I was under the assumption that all the names were provided, not just two. I have it in an email.
If I may, my, the request, the names of the maps that were responsive to the PRA were the only things that were provided.
And that is the reason why I support map 106.
Does anyone have any comments?
I don't know why I always do this to myself and go last. I always gotta follow something. So I think the comments I made on February 7th were taken out of context. If it offended any of the people that are on the committee, I apologize. I'm grateful for the work that people do for the community, but I stand by it, all right? In my case, in my district, right, the one person that I identified to be on there had to step down, right? And I only had to choose from one other person, right? And that's why I said I settled. I settled for one person. I didn't have a whole bunch of people to pick from. That's the cards. I was dealt. I'm dealing with them. I'm not really talking about the diversity or the lack of diversity in the committee. It is what it is because I know at the end of the day, the city council makes the final decision. This council deviates from the recommendations from commissions all the time, all the time, you know? And so it, I'm not, I mean, I'm grateful for the work they did. But at the end of the day, I have to center the needs of the people of my district, center the needs of the people that I promised, right? You know, that I've kind of like given my life for, right? And it's like, that's the most impacted people. I don't see these maps as, you know, being broken down by neighborhoods of color. I see them, because I don't believe we're in a race war. I believe that we're in a class war. And that means it's between the owners and the working class, the real working class. And so, and that's what I see here. I see working-class communities being divided in 103, I mean, 107. And I see them centered in map 106. I support map 106. My compromise is map 401. I encourage the city council, my colleagues, to look at 401. I think it has a very low deviation. I think it centers the needs of the working class, those that support this economy. And, you know, I just, I would like y'all to at least take a look at 401 and see if it's something that we could all agree upon.
Thank you, Jesse. It's to me, I guess, huh? Three for 203, three for 106, so it's no pressure on... And possibly a 401. Any other interested in 401 from what Jesse?
I would consider 401.
Is it possible to get 401 blown up? Do you have the next page that has all the demographic breakdown?
And Mayor, once again, my map District Two is incomplete. I know you're talking about a wastewater plant, but we've got, we've got commercial...
Noted, noted. It's the wastewater treatment plant.
No, it's more than that.
I think it's just, we'll drive out there tomorrow and check it out.
No, it's more than that.
You're good. Thank you. To Sarah Delray and Kevin, do you, three, and a 401 was a late submitted, what are your thoughts on 401?
I'm a 203, but if that fails, I would consider 401. But I would start my first thing with me to make a motion for 203, but I'll do that later, obviously.
Delray?
I'd be hypocritical if I went something else because I largely said the reasons why 203 is there. It's a hard one, right? Because now you're putting 106 against 401, and 106 now becomes a decent map.
Sarah?
I'm still in favor of 203 if, like, Councilmember Shelton and Pro Tim Blake said, open to suggestions. But yeah, 401 and 106, comparing those two.
All right. Again, as everybody went through this process, thanking everybody for their work, thanking everybody for fighting what they think is best. You know, there are two parts to this. One, I just, I love the energy and the passion on both sides. But at the same time, sometimes, you know, you just see how, again, it, both sides, and in particular, you know, hearing some of those voicemails, especially from, you know, people of my own race, of white people, sometime, you know, saying things unintended that are harmful and that, you know, are sort of meant to exclude, meant to other. And sometimes I, you know, we need to come together, and good people need to band together and join together. And I think, you know, both sides need to recognize how things they say, whether intended or not, can divide. And, you know, good people of all, good people, bad people are not limited to one age or racial group. Good people and bad people exist on all different levels. So, you know, looking at everything again, you know, focusing again on 106 and 203, just looking at their similarities at first. Four Latino-majority districts both have, two Latino-CVAP districts, six majority-minority, or six majority-non-white districts. Both of them are the same on that. If you look at the demographic breakdown between Hispanics, whites, blacks, and Asians, each of the four, each four percentages in each of the six districts are 24 total numbers. If you look at those, 10 of the numbers, the percentage, and these are 1 to 100 percentage, right? 10 of those, almost half, is identical, the same number. Eight is within 1% of each other. So you're talking 18 out of 24 numbers between 1 and 100 are within 1%, so 75%. And the remaining six are within 2% to 3% of the 24. Looking at it, between those two, I think 203 is the better map. I think, you know, obviously, we're not beholden to the work of the Redistricting Visoring Committee. It's something we should consider. But just looking at the boundaries, you know, in particular, and looking at the main things, right? Of all the voicemails we heard, everybody, the number one thing, keep neighborhoods of interest together. And I think, you know, 203 did a better job than 106 with that. You're looking at contiguous neighborhoods, undivided, easy boundaries, compact. It's just, I think it's close, but it's a superior map. You look at the way it treats G Street as a boundary, the way it keeps downtown together better, the way it, they treat South Merced identically. The way it uses the creek as a boundary, for example. It was mentioned, and I agree to an extent, that a flaw with that map is that Donna and Buena Vista isn't typically, it's not as good of a boundary as Yosemite. But, you know, having formerly represented that council district, there is a bit of a split there as you get towards. And walking those neighborhoods, knocking on all those doors multiple times when I ran for council, I've been representing that district for years. You know, the, towards the northern end of District Five, it changes a little bit. It's a different, it's, they're newer neighborhoods. They're more, much more students in those neighborhoods. It's just, it's a different, you knock those doors, it's a different feel up there. So that's a little, it's not as bad of a boundary as it might appear. You know, again, looking at 401, I think the unfortunate thing is it was submitted so late. I think, again, there's a lot of promise in that map as well. It's close, you know, I think, but at the end, you know, I think 203 is a little better, so. Hard decisions to make, but, you know, and again, thanks to everybody who's involved in this process. And at the end of the day, it's not, we're dealing with tiny, tiny percentages here. And I think, you know, we're all looking forward to going forward strong and working together to build the city and to fight for the city. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of hard work to do, and I welcome all of you in that work going forward. So again, I think if I had to pick, 203 is the best, slightly better than 401. And I think, you know, 106 for the below-stated reasons, most particularly how what it does between 3, 4, and 5 is the less preferable of the three. Just my thoughts.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve map 203.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Blake, and a second by Councilmember Shelton. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Yeah, we're doing buttons, yeah. Okay, and the motion passes with Councilmember Edgaviria Perez and Rallos voting no.
Okay. Again, thank you all, and thank you, council, for the work on this. Hard decisions, no map is perfect. We'll take, if we could take a brief...